Well, it is 5:30. I'd like to welcome everybody to our November Board Meeting for the Board of Commissioners. Thank you all for coming and being with us tonight. I would like to ask Mr. Frye, which I didn't ask him in advance, but would you lead us in the case?
I will. Good morning, gentlemen. Lord God almighty, we thank you for this time we have, your presence here with us, your blessings and your understanding given to us so that we can hear and understand the work of this county. We thank you for this opportunity, safe passage, good health, and all the hard work that's been going on. Lord, we pray that all those that are under the weather feel better. In the name of Jesus, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
While we're standing, if you gentlemen pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pull up the agenda on the screen as we go. We have a couple of amendments to the agenda as we're going tonight. The first is under Item B, under New Business. We need to add a GFO loan modification. This is for the airport lift station. And then Item B would be to remove Item C under rezones, which is Holly Hill Manor. They had originally submitted for a conditional use to amend their operating hours, but have since sent us an email asking to be removed from the agenda tonight, not wanting to move forward. Do I have any other amendments that we're missing?
Yes, there's things too.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Sure, move.
I'll second it. Any questions or further discussion? All in favor?
Uh huh.
One few cares as well. All right. No items on our consent agenda for tonight, no old business carrying over into tonight. Under New Business, we do have an agreement. This is an agreement with the City of Nelson and Pickens County for the tax commissioner to be able to collect taxes for the City of Nelson. They've asked us, will we take on that task? So the agreement has been drafted and reviewed by Mr. Landry. Y'all three, Mr. Landry, do you have any comments or anything?
I don't know.
Okay. I think that they've worked it out. I've talked to the City of Nelson as well, and I think all details are there. Could I have a move in order to authorize me as chairman to sign the agreement on behalf of the county?
Sure.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh huh.
One few cares as well. All right. So the Item B that we were adding into the agenda for tonight is the GFO loan modification for the airport lift station. This is where the sewer lift station is being placed in at the airport. We, the project took a little bit longer than what was originally there, so it's to modify the date for repayment to start on that GFO loan. This would move that repayment date from starting this month to the month of May to allow them to finish the punch-out list. Do I have a move to authorize me to sign that document in order to extend that payback period?
Sure.
All right. I'll second that one. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh huh.
One few cares as well. So the next item we've got for tonight is our finance report. Ms. Bunch has weathered about three weeks of working around the clock to come in with us tonight, so thank you for being here to come through and present. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Tonight, on the October 21st, our financial report reflects 10 months of your 21 fiscal year expenditure should not exceed 83%. As you can see on your slide there, the general revenue for October was $23.06 million. Compared to last year, it was 16.9%, which is 81.03% of the allotted budget. On the next screen, you'll have where you can see the difference between the budgets. Like I said, it was 81.03%. The largest revenue piece that we had received was for taxes that had come in. The general revenue expenditures for October were $20,364,518, which is, as you can see on the slide, is 70.82% of the 83% of the budget. Compared to last year, we were at 24.0, and a lot of that is, again, like I keep saying, is because of the COVID expenses that we had to put out. For general and government, we were at 76.95% of the overall budget of the 83%. For judicial expenditures, we were at $2,922,132, at 74.23% of 83% of the allotted budget. Public safety expenditures were $10,105, which is 68.85% of the 83% of the budget. Public work expenditures were $2,771,771,826, which was 71.68% of 83% of the budget. Health and welfare expenditures for October were $122,781, which is 42.80% of the budget. Culture and recreation expenditures were $931,451, which was 81.93% of the budget. Housing and development, $628,242, which is 68.5% of the overall budget. And your enterprise funds were $2,725,406, which was 78.45% of the budget. The line item budget reports were distributed out to department heads and elected officials this week, and I have copies of any of those if you would like to see them.
Thank you. Any questions on the finance report? I will make one statement. I know that overall, you can take a look at how far under budget each area has done this year, which is pretty incredible. One of those is you need, under public safety, where it showed that we were at 67%, I believe, for public safety. A portion of that is due to the way the allocation was done from the American Rescue Plan funds. A portion of American Rescue Plan, the grant that was provided by federal government, was allotted to pay public safety salaries. And so, a big chunk of that went into your public safety salaries, which ended up showing those line items at significantly under budget. When it comes through, by the time we reach the end of the year and we get all the final, the final numbers where we include that grant back into the budget, because it wasn't there when the budget was set, then you'll be able to kind of see the full allocation of how that went. So, that makes it look a little bit different, but it still would be under budget along with the other line items if it had carried on the way through. So, thank you, Charlene. I will, before we move into the budget proposal, I want to make sure to give credit to the team that has done such an incredible job. Charlene Bunch and Bill Wood, Director of Administration, have both worked around the clock for the last three weeks, constantly going through and taking all the information. It led much longer than three weeks, but these last three weeks have really been crunch time. Literally have worked through the weekends, through just everything that they could do to do it. I think physically has took a toll on both, because both are now a little bit sniffly with the season. So, I just want to say thank you to each of you for all the work that you've done, and we wouldn't be here tonight presenting the budget for the upcoming year if it hadn't been for your hard work. You did good. So, thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the proposal of our 2022 fiscal year budget. I'm going to go through and kind of detail out what that budget has so that we can, you know, take a look. Before I dive into it, I want to kind of explain the full process. We will make the full presentation tonight of the budget. The budget will then be advertised, or not advertised, will be placed on our website. It's actually there right now, so you can pull up our full budget on pickenscountyga.gov. Nina got that up earlier today, so you'll have the full detail. Budget is available along with a summary sheet that's the front end, and tonight's presentation that we're about to go through for the next few slides. All of those are on the website. We also have a physical copy of the budget that is in the county court's office, so anybody in the public that wants to come in and physically sit and go through the book will provide that to where they can go through it as well. We will do two public hearings. We will have during their next two work sessions, so on December the 2nd and December 16th at 4:30, we'll have a public hearing as a portion of our work session, so that anybody in the public that has a comment, question, can come in, and we'll do a modified version of the presentation that you're about to see. So we'll have those, and then following that meeting on the 16th, when we have our regular meeting, will be the time when we would vote on next year's budget. So, December 16th will be the time of the vote. So, just to kind of give you an overview of where we're headed with it. So, going through what we're going to get through tonight, the duties of budget officers, the priorities, challenges, the overall process that we followed in the fiscal year '22 proposed budget, and then we'll take a look at our capital project fund and closing out the fiscal year of 2021. The duties of a budget officer, this is just to explain how it is set in law, one, by county ordinance, which is under Section 115, states that the chairperson shall annually, shall submit annually to the Board of Commissioners a proposed budget for all governing expenditures and county funds, including capital outlay and public works projects for the following fiscal year. The law under the State of Georgia, 3681, states that the budget officer means a local government official charged with budget preparation and administration for the local government. So, just explanation on why Charlene did all the work to put this together, but I'm the one that's standing here to describe what they've done to put it together. Budget priorities for 2022, obviously the most important is minimizing costs while improving services. I think that's our goal all the time. Establishing a solid foundation for growth, effective operations, and long-term planning, and to provide a COLA, a cost of living adjustment, that enables our dedicated public servants to keep pace with the rising price of essential goods and services. When you take a look at challenges, that last statement made on our COLA, inflation is probably the largest challenge that we face going into 2022. It's just an area that we can't control. We're all feeling the pressure of that. Health cost pressures, taking a look at the different claims that come through. Increased operational demands, with that inflation comes increased cost for all the operational services that we provide. And then COVID-19, unfortunately, we're still waiting to see, is it going to surge back up again? So, trying to plan and prepare for what effect that may have on us, whether it's our manpower keeping the offices open, or the cost of goods and services that we're dealing with. We need to make sure that we're aware going through that. The overarching, overarching challenge is to meet the budget priorities and challenges within the context of property tax millage rate reduction. We went from 7.613 to 7.489, which is a reduction of 1.66%. Being able to roll back that millage rate to try to offset some of the burden that our taxpayers are feeling as well. So, our budget process this year, we did a five-year analysis of all the financial data, went through all five years of actual and expenditures, total expenditures, received departmental submissions that came from each department head, along with all elected officials and appointed boards, conducted internal meetings. There was a budget committee that consisted of Charlene with the finance side, Director Sloan Elrod, Director Bill Wood, Ms. Paula Peace with Human Resources, and Becky Denny was a part of that process as well, representing the Board of Commissioners to go through and have those internal meetings. Those led us having public meetings. We did two different dates, one with all elected officials and appointed officials, and then another with all department heads, where we sat and reviewed budget requests that came through. And then that evolved into the proposed budget that's being presented here tonight. So, that's kind of how that collection process took place and how we were able to go through. All agencies, offices, boards, and departments funded by the Board of Commissioners were a part of presenting their funding requests to the full Board of Commissioners in those hearings, and that's how, again, that we got here tonight. So, the fiscal year 2022 proposed budget, again, the property tax rate reduction of 1.66%. It's a balanced budget with no use of fund balance. We're not pulling from any fund balance to fund the upcoming year. Most departments' operating budgets stayed the same or decreased, net the salaries and allocable expenses. So, they either stayed the same or decreased prior to establishing a cost of living adjustment and putting a COLA in place for those employees. We did this year have a uniform cost of living adjustment of 5% for all employees, so that it didn't fluctuate from department to department. So, we were able to put into the budget a 5% cost of living adjustment to go through. We did create a medical cost contingency fund that you'll see in this, of $515,004. The purpose behind that is we have our fixed costs for our medical insurance, but then as claims start to come through, because we're a partially self-funded insurance program, those claims can eat us alive toward the end of the year. I think that having a budget in place to where we're prepared for that as we go through the year is definitely solid. Increasing a general contingency fund from $90,008 to $200,000. The fiscal year 2020 budget for reference was a $1.1 million contingency, so we are, we're trying to establish that at a $200,000 for next year, for when things occur beyond our planning. The totals for the general fund, revenue and expenditures match at $33,661,883. Water and Sewer, which is a separate enterprise fund, revenue and expenditures match at $2,914,016. The Airport Authority, which is also its own enterprise fund, revenue of $862,822, and the same for expenses. And then our 2020 SLOPS, is a six-year running SLOPS, the county portion of that SLOPS that runs for the six years, total would be $30,266,000. So, that's the projected over, over the full six-year period. It began in 2020, and will continue to run forward as we go through. Taking a look on the revenue side, how that breaks down into the total that we came up to. Real property taxes for the fiscal year '22 budget is $11,245,395. That's an increase from $10,850,000 the year prior. If you look at the local option sales tax, it's $4,300,000 for the proposed '22, while in '21 it was $3,900,000. Other taxes, the increase was from '21 at $6,475,700 to $6,798,411. Licensing and permits stayed the same at $517,400. Intergovernmental revenues increased by right at 200, I'm sorry, yeah, right at 200,000, at $2,231,467. Charges for services stayed flat with a $7,000 difference at $4,170,700. Fines and forfeitures was a small increase of $15,000 to $270,400. Other revenues, this one is, you can see a significant jump. In '21, it was $842,310. In '22, the proposed budget includes $4,128,110. The reason for that increase is the American Rescue Plan Grant Fund. The, when the budget was being completed for 2021, nobody had heard of the American Rescue Plan grant that all governments were going to receive. We do know what the dollar amount we're going to receive for next year is, so we went ahead and factored that into our budget, so that you can see, so that does show that increase where it comes in. So, that's the reason for that significant jump, when you see that. Overall breakdown of the revenues, you can see in the form of a pie chart and percentages. Real property taxes account for 33.41%. The local option sales tax accounts for 12.77%. Other taxes is 20%, 20.19%. Licensing and permits is 1.54%. Intergovernmental agreements, 6.63%. Services, 12.39%. Fines and forfeitures account for .80%, and other revenue is 12.27% of the overall budget. The grant that I was just describing would fall in that other revenue portion. If you take a look at our general fund expenditures, general government, $8,235,217. That's another area where you see that significant shift from '21, where it went from $4,42,000. You can see to the side of the slide there, that is the American Rescue Plan Fund is the biggest bulk of that, which was $3.1 million of that. New insurance costs and new contingencies in the accounts, that was a total of a $3.8 million increase in that line item. Judicial services went from $3,936,781 in '21, and then in '22 would be at $4,017,570. Public safety is $14,877,300 in '21, going to $14,514,265. You can see that's a slight decrease. Once again, that kind of goes back to the allocation of how the funds from the American Rescue Plan are spent, projecting forward, using a portion of that to pay some of the public safety salaries, as is allowed by the American Rescue Plan, caused that to have a slight reduction going into this year's budget. Public works, $4,595,827 is proposed for '22. That's an increase from $3,867,203. The L-Meg, which is the state fund grants for paving, were factored in. Those funds projecting that account for a total of $831,471. Ones for the standard L-Meg grant, the others for a portion that we've already been awarded for an assistance in paving Grandview Road. So, that $831,000 of the increase, otherwise the cost would have been reduced by $118,000 in public works if those two line items didn't exist. So, that'll, that'll give you just a, an idea of why those expenditures changed in that category. Health and welfare stayed flat, pretty much, at $286,021 in '21 and $282,022. Recreation and culture increased by $70,000, going to $1.2 million, $399.00. Housing and development actually had a slight reduction from $892,343 to $815,624 in expenditures. Showing a breakdown of that in percentages, the same as we did with the revenue. You can see general government accounts for 24% of the budget, judicial for 11.94%. Public safety is 43.12, public works is at 13.65%. Health and welfare is just under 1% at .85%. Rec and culture, recreation and culture is at 3.56%, and housing and development at 2.42%. So, that, again, shows that the American Rescue Plan, new insurance costs, and new contingencies are accounting for the significant jump in the general government expenditures, which is the same as what you saw on the revenue side, is how that went through. Taking a look at personnel, currently we have 311 full-time positions, 57 part-time, 11 open at this time. Moving into '22, we had one new position in Parks and Recreation. It's a part-time position, and then we're going to be working on a fire chief replacement probably in the second quarter of '22. So, those will be the two positions that will be changing as we move into the year of 2022. If we look at our proprietary funds, which is our water and sewer and our airport, both are enterprise funds, our revenues, again, for water and sewer is at $2,914,016. The admin expense of that's $400,934. Operational expenses, $2,513,082. Airport, we have revenue for the airport coming in at $862,822. Broken down, it is just straight into operational expenses, so you can see the difference in those two as well. If we take a look at our SLOPS again, we mentioned what the total amount for the SLOPS, the referendum that was passed in 2020. You have the total SLOPS of the breakdown at $37 million. If those projections stay and hold true throughout the life of the SLOPS, the road projects and facilities will stand to receive over six years $16,39,500. Parks and Recreation will stand to receive $3.7 million. Enterprise fund debt, which is the airport debt for the original construction of what's referred to as the horseshoe, which is where the new hangers are going, that portion was $3,496,500. Public safety, fire and EMS and sheriff, both receiving $2.96. And then water and sewer facilities, receiving $1,110,000. Pickens County total is $30,266,000. The reason that total is different than your total SLOPS at the top is because the town of Talkin' Rock, the City of Nelson, and the City of Jasper, all three have allocations from that SLOPS as well. Closing out 2021, we can take a look at some of the things that we've been able to go through that's led us to this point. One, one big thing that we were able to accomplish so far this year is the utilization of the tax anticipation note, something that's been used for years because of when we collect our taxes versus, all our revenue comes in at the end of the year that has to fund the beginning of the year. This year, our tax anticipation note that we were able to utilize was $500,000. In comparison, in 2020, it was $4,500,000, so we reduced that by $4 million this year. Most departments have been operating under budget reference, their expenditures, which has been incredible. Those two things combined have led us to an ability to, as of today, actually, when the payroll was running for tomorrow, issue a bonus to county employees. That bonus is for $3,000 for full-time county employees and $1,000 for part-time employees. That's one way that we can stay competitive. I know several of our other counties have found ways to do something fairly similar, and we wanted to make sure that we showed how much we appreciate and care for all of our employees, and even though we may not be able to change all the salaries right at once, since we did have the ability this year to do it, we went ahead and made the decision to issue that bonus as well. We are working in the process of selecting a new audit firm this year. By our local act, there's a limited amount of time that an auditor can work with the county, so we will be working through that process over the next couple of months, receiving those submissions, and moving through. Our fund balance carried into 2021 was $10,82,804, which is 35.8% of our 2020 expenditures. We are not going to use any fund balance to finish this year out or to carry into next year, so we still will be remaining with a 35% fund balance in the bank, so that if there's issues, we do have that balance that's on hand. And, again, thanks to all of our department heads, and a special thanks to both Charlene and Bill for putting together so much work to go through and do the research. They have compared, we've went conservative on our revenue projections. I will say that. We have tried to be as conservative, taken a look over the last five years of where those increases in different lines have increased, so that we didn't stay on the high end. We stayed on the conservative side, and we hope if we're able to manage our budgets similar to this year is what we did. For 2022 is what we did in 2021. We'll be able to come forward with additional good news at the end of next year as well. It's a unique time for government, with local option sales tax being up and several different things going on like crazy. We do know that those times can change, so we're trying to always stay prepared. That's why I wanted to make sure to show our fund balance that we're carrying forward is to, we want to stay prepared for any event that the economy does shift, that we're in a solid position as a county to continue to provide services. So, that's the end of the presentation for the budget, fiscal year proposed budget for 2022. Again, the entire line item breakdown, which is way more detailed than this presentation, is on the website. It's on the front page, and so you can go through if you want to take a look at that, and you can also see the summary sheet that shows that guide as well. And this presentation is there, so you can pull it up in a PDF form and go through each slide that we just went through. So, next on our agenda is to go into our action items. We do have the minutes from our meetings on November the 4th, which are regular meeting and our work session meeting. I believe those minutes were provided to each board member, each of us, prior to coming into tonight. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review and read. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes on both. Do you have a second?
Okay.
Any very good discussion on those? All in favor?
Yeah.
All right. So, those are there. We do have several rezones to go through tonight. We'll go through each of these rezone requests that go through. The first is the rezon request for a change in land use classification for parcel 046C134 Cove Road in Jasper, Georgia. The planning commission received a completed application from Turner Griffin requesting a change in the land use classification of rural residential to agricultural on a 19.518 acre tri- acre tract located on Cove Road in Jasper. Intended purpose of the rezone request is for a portion of the property to be used for his landscape business. The public hearing was held on November the 8th, and the planning commission voted for yes, zero no, to approve the rezone request on this property. Do I have a move to accept or to recommend rezone following the request of the Planning Zone Commission for approval? I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor? Our next rezone request was for a change in land use classification for parcel 017001 on Big Ridge Road, Talking Rock, Georgia. Planning and Development Office received completed application on September 22nd from Sean Hugh Gueye on behalf of RLF Talking Rock Properties, requesting a change in the land use classification of suburban residential to agricultural on a 16.7 acre tract located on Big Ridge Road. Intended purpose of the rezone request is to combine the parcel with the adjoining 108 acres for future lot split and sell. A public hearing was held on the 8th of November regarding the application before the Pickens County Planning Commission, and after reviewing the application and receiving staff reports recommending the zoning change to be approved, the vote was for yes, zero no, to approve the rezone request on this tract of land. Do I have a move to approve the rezone request as recommended by the Planning Commission? I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor? So, item C that was on our agenda that we've removed was for Holly Hill Manor. As we mentioned before, they had requested to be removed from the agenda, so we will not be voting on that property tonight. We do go to item D, which is a rezone request for change in land use classification for 391 Buchanan Road in Ball Ground. It's parcel number 068116003. Planning Commission, or Planning Development Office received a completed application on September 29th from Kevin McGinn requesting a change in land use classification from rural residential to agricultural on a two-acre tract on 391 Buchanan Road. Intended purpose of the rezone request, if approved, was to split the five-acre tract, keeping three acres rural residential, making two acres agricultural, and absorb those two acres into the adjoining 38.05 acre tract. Public hearing was held on November the 8th, and the Planning Commission voted for yes, zero no, to approve the rezone request of the two-acre tract contained on tax parcel 068116003. Do I have a move to approve the rezone request as recommended by Planning Commission? I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, and our last rezone request for the night is a rezone request for change in land use classification for parcels 0538, 083, and 053A084, which is at 301 Harmony School Road. Planning and Development Office received a completed application on October 1st from Tina O'Connor on behalf of Gary Copeland requesting change in the land use classification of rural residential to highway business on a 6.93 acre tract located at 301 Harmony School Road. Intended purpose of the rezone request, if approved, was for the future sale of the two properties. Public hearing was held on November the 8th regarding the application, and the Planning Commission voted for yes, zero no, to approve the rezone request on the 6.93 acre tract contained on this parcel. Do I have a move to accept the recommendation from the Planning Commission and approve this rezone request? I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor? That concludes all of our rezone requests. So, the next item on the agenda for tonight is guest comments. Do I have any comments from anyone here tonight? Or a quiet bunch? It's like I've done all the talking. All right, well, with no guest comments, it is 6:05, and I would like to make a move that we adjourn. All right, we'll be adjourned. Thank you very much for coming.
I'll second that.